I will call the meeting to order for the Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2020-03 for February 4th, 2020. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father.
Good morning, Heaven. I will be thy name, thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread; and give us not stress cases, but daily good news, trust, asking success; and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us with pure lives, kingdom, power, and glory forever. Amen.
Our children, these are the United States of America, a sincere republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. The consent agenda has been approved. The first line of business tonight is a certificate of appreciation for Mr. James Johnson for participating in the Reeds Across America Program. Mr. Johnson's here tonight. If you'll meet me at the podium, that would be great. Thank you.
Are you ready?
Okay, John.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Every December, Purdue Farms celebrates Reeds Across America. They do that by having an elite group of drivers who bring the reeds, bring them from Maine, right?
Yes.
They bring the reeds from Maine. On the way, they stop at West Point Cemetery and they deliver reeds there. They also deliver reeds at the U.S. Naval Academy Cemetery in Annapolis, as well as Arlington Cemetery in DC. Do you, sometimes you go down to Florida?
Yes. We go to Florida and we go over here to Mobile.
Yes.
Yes.
So they travel across the east coast, and they're part of that trip, they come to Wycomico County, of course. And Mr. Johnson is one of those elite drivers. Mr. Johnson is also a veteran, but thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
In case no one knew, they've been doing it for about 13 years. They have delivered over 200,000 reeds in that period of time, 25,000 of which they delivered just in this last year. At Wycomico War Memorial, at the Civic Center, they deliver seven reeds, one for each branch of service, to recognize the 191 men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice for our nation's security and for our freedoms. So this is a gentleman that's part of that program. I've been to it every year that I could make it, and it's an excellent program. They do such a very professional job. If you haven't been, make sure you do that. It's usually within the first, second week of December. But it's a tribute to these gentlemen, Mr. Johnson in particular, for the great work that they've done. We wanted to give them a certificate of appreciation, which reads as such: "It is with great pleasure that the members of the Wycomico County Council extend this certificate of appreciation to James Johnson for your participation in Reeds Across America. We thank you for your selfless act of service to remember our fallen veterans, honor those who serve, and teach the value of freedom. Done this fourth day of February 2020. Signed by the members of the Wycomico County Council."
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin, I have one announcement to make, and that is there is one change to the agenda this evening. The open work session to discuss the 457B deferred compensation plan will be postponed to a future meeting. There is one resolution on the agenda this evening for your consideration. We are doing some cross-training in the council office, so, Mr. Vice President, with your permission, I'd like to have Mrs. Lynn Sandy read that resolution summary.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley.
Good evening, everybody. We have Resolution Number 102020, to authorize the county to acquire an easement on 270.81 acres, more or less, within the Quantico Creek Rural Legacy Area, from John T. Williamson, Granville J. Williamson, and Susan B. Loki. The property being located on Porter Mill Road and designated as Tax Map 17, Parcels 123, and Tax Map 26, Parcels 13 and 28. And we have Mr. Frank McKenzie here, if there's any questions.
Mrs. Hurley, didn't give her that resolution just because it's the longest one I've ever heard read in 10 years.
Want to make sure she got practice in.
Very good. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution Number 102020.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. McKenzie, how are you, sir?
Haven't seen you in a while.
It's been a couple of days, I think. Thanks for having me back. First, I'd like to introduce Jerry Parks. Jerry's with the Lower Shore Land Trust, and is kind of our field person that works with the local landowners.
Okay.
Kind of making sure, putting the deals together for us.
Great. Good to have you here.
Thanks for having me.
We met back in August to talk about a project for the Potter Project. And at that time, I went through and gave everybody kind of a history of the Rural Legacy Program. I didn't think I'd be doing all that at this time. I thought I'd just go into the deep information about this particular project, rather than give a history of the program.
Okay.
I will say that, you know, since 2002, the Rural Legacy Program has received over $8,514,000 to purchase easements in the Rural Legacy Area. And to date, we have spent over $10 million for those easements. Now, we also receive money from the Department of the Navy, the Conservation Reserve, Crep Program, the County Forest Conservation Program. They all have different interests in this Rural Legacy Protection. The Navy in particular likes to contribute money in lands that fall under their flight path easements. So they are willing to contribute 50% of the cost of the easement itself in order to eliminate and prohibit excessive development within their flight path areas. To date, we have protected 4,553 acres of land. So tonight, we have before you a request to protect 270.81 acres of land for John Williamson, Granville Williamson, and Susan Loki on Porter Mill Road. For this project, we plan to partner with the Department of Natural Resources, Department of the Navy, Chesapeake Conservancy, and the Lower Shore Land Trust. All of our projects, it's always a concern that the project that we're trying to protect needs protection. In other words, can it be developed? Are the soils good for percolation? Is the zoning proper that would allow development to occur? So we go through a series of analysis, looking at zoning codes, subdivision regs, to see exactly, you know, what are we protecting on this property? In this case, going through the zoning code and subdivision regs, you know, it's determined that the property we're looking at could allow 17 subdivisions, 17 lots on this piece of property. We also looked at the septic bill, which also can be a limiting factor in how much land, how many development rights you have on a piece of property.
Mm-hmm.
In this case, the septic bill, which people think is more restrictive, would allow more lots than our zone code would allow.
Really?
The septic bill will allow seven dwelling units per lot.
Mm-hmm.
In this case, there are four parcels that we're really dealing with, so they would allow 28 parcels, 28 lots. But the subdivision regs and County zoning code will have precedent over this, and therefore we're limiting it to 17 lots that would be allowed.
So you're saying it's excellent soils?
Excuse me?
You're saying it's excellent soils for development?
Yeah.
Right.
There are, you only 10,000 square feet of soil, of good soil for a septic system.
Mm-hmm.
And there's approximately 30 good acres of soils that are percolable.
Mm-hmm.
In addition to that, you know, there's mound systems that are being, you know, built out throughout the county, so pretty much everything's game now.
No.
So, we talked about the soils. So the next question is, how many lots are we really extinguishing? They are going to be allowed to have dwellings on existing parcels, but they cannot do, you know, any more subdivision of property. So ultimately, we're reducing development potential in an area that is agricultural resource in its nature, limiting that to 17 lots, and those lots are now being, the landowner has agreed to not pursue any development on that parcel. When we're trying to figure out the value of this, there are two methods that we can use. The Department of the Navy will only recognize a certified appraisal for this. In this case, you know, the Ford Appraisal and Consulting was hired to do the appraisal, and they estimated that the easement value is $1,495 per acre, for a total of $405,000. So that is the money that will go to the landowner. In addition to that, there are other funds that are necessary to make this deal happen, and that includes legal work, the cost of the appraisal, survey work, several other items. So what we're requesting tonight is your recommendation for approval for us to proceed with this acquisition, to purchase the easement on 270 acres. And on page five, there's a breakdown of how the funding works out of the report. Basically, in this project, we're only requesting $37,500 from the Rural Legacy Program. The Navy is contributing $202,500. The Chesapeake Conservancy has expressed an interest in Wycomico County, and they're willing to donate $150,000 for this easement. The Wycomico County Forest Conservation Fund is going to contribute $15,000, for a total of $405 for the easement. Now, the related costs, as you can see, there's administrative, appraisals, survey, title insurance. There's also monitoring that we have to do. We have to go out every several years to make sure that they're still in compliance with their easement requirements. That's for a total of $55,270. So the total cost of this project would be $460,000, $460,270 and 50 cents. So if there's any questions, I'd be willing to give it a shot.
Any questions? Any questions? This doesn't look like it. Anything else you'd like to add?
No. Frank covered it pretty well.
He did, didn't he? All those in favor of Resolution Number 102020, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I want to abstain.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilman Hastings abstains. Let's do the overtime. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Resolution 102020 passes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, again.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Jerry.
And, Mr. Cannon, that's all we have tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Sandy. At this time, on the agenda, we now enter public comments. Anybody that would like to make a public comment, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Yes, sir.
Does that seat?
Well, we reserved the podium for any public speaking. That's a PAC 14 can get a good shot at it.
My name is Steve Merritt. I moved here three years ago from Montana and live here in town. And I probably don't have all the information, but just a couple of comments on the proposed cannabis regulations. In 2014, I consulted with doctors and stopped using pharmaceuticals for a couple of different conditions, osteoarthritis and fibromyalgia. I've never regretted that decision. This proposal scares me a little bit, as, you know, a cannabis user, a law-abiding citizen. I guess I have more questions about it than I have answers. Maybe some of those questions have been answered. I think it's reasonable to have some concern. The state has decriminalized cannabis. We have a medical cannabis program. Cannabis isn't going to go away. I think it's reasonable to expect that there are going to be some use conflicts, and I think it's reasonable to have a discussion about that. I think the concern is reasonable, and I would just like to see more information. I would like to see more community involvement. And I guess that's pretty much what I have to say. You know, I've read all the stuff I could read in the newspapers. I've watched the videos. Again, I just have a number of questions. Is this going to result in blood tests for civil fines and stuff like that? So, a bunch of questions. And it was my understanding that it was presented as an emergency regulation. I also don't understand why this has to be an emergency, why we can't have more of a community kind of discussion.
Okay. All right. If you'd like to leave any of your information with Mrs. Hurley.
I didn't bring it. Oh, just contact information?
Just contact information. That way, we can forward any documents to you that you'd like.
Thanks for hearing my comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that need to be made.
Thanks, Mr. Merritt. Any other public comments?
Joan Smith, Wycomico County educator, Wycomico County taxpayer, and Wycomico County president of the Education Association. For the past several years, we've all been working hard to improve education funding, and we've made some real progress. This year is our chance to win long-term solutions that will help to solve the crisis of underfunded schools. And as Thornton funding was phased in, test scores jumped, class sizes shrank, educator pay improved, and headlines of teacher shortages receded. Maryland reached the top rankings of the school systems in the country. But then the funding flatlined during the Great Recession, and how we fund schools has not changed since the beginning of Thornton in 2002. Yet, statistics on poverty, special education needs for our students, and English language learners has all increased. This leaves us in a desperate need of an update to the school funding formula to address the needs of our schools and our students. In 2016, Governor Hogan appointed Britt Kerwin to lead the Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education to address these issues. The team was charged to tell how to move our schools from middle-of-the-road to world-class within 10 years. And after three years of research, the team produced a report that focused on policy recommendations, as well as updates to the school funding formula. And all of these areas, the five areas that the team focused on, are interconnected. We already know that Wycomico County has been a leader, really, in investing in early childhood education and in teaming with the general public in increasing the capacity of both public and private providers. We have encouraged an increased number of family resource centers and duty centers, and that's all supported by Kerwin. Second, the transformation of teaching into a high-status profession. Elevating the rigor of teacher preparation programs and teacher certification standards is essential in the Kerwin Report. Include cultural competence, bias awareness, and restorative justice training for all teachers is another essential component. To expand scholarship programs to help recruit talented students into teaching careers, and hopefully keep them in Wycomico County, is a third priority. Establishing a career ladder for teachers so that they don't need to leave the classroom and move into administration where career changes in order to make more money is a fourth priority that Kerwin cited in transforming teaching into a high-status profession. You know, I like working with my students. I've been in the profession for more than 30 years. And it's important to me to stay in the classroom, though we have opportunities to plan and collaborate with our colleagues. We don't really need more supervisors and coordinators and such. We need to be with the kids, and that will help in itself to reduce the class size, and to provide benchmark salaries against other professions requiring similar levels of education. And I want to share with you a comparison. Why can't we keep our teachers, our best teachers, our veteran teachers in Wycomico County? A large part of it has to do with salary, and I want to share that with you.
Please take one and pass it around, please.
Thank you. College and career-ready pathways is a third priority of the Kerwin Report. Expanding CTE programs and ensuring that all students are successful by providing intensive services for students and their families to enable them to succeed in school. One of, I think, the most important features of Kerwin is the accountability column, and that is, the blueprint created in Inspector General for Education that will help make sure these new investments are not susceptible to waste, fraud, and abuse, but that the money gets to our students, into our classrooms, and into the programs that we know are going to make the biggest difference for educational outcomes. In November, Kerwin, the Kerwin Commission voted 19-3 in favor of a new funding formula that includes weight, a new weighting, a factoring concentration of poverty in the county, and significant funding increases per pupil, special ed, and English as a second language learners. And this is important because this is what distinguishes the counties. I've heard some say that some counties are being better paid than others to help with the schools. Well, they're the schools with the greatest need. For Wycomico, the new formula would not require new local funding over what the current formula would require until fiscal year 2026, with a total of $24.7 million in county aid over the full phase in. This new formula would bring $354 million in new state aid over the full phase in. Ladies and gentlemen, students and the Wycomico County community are counting on you to support their educational and future success. We must not merely stay the course. We must not ignore the opportunities that Kerwin is affording us at this time. And that goes not only for teachers, but also for our educational support staff, who every single day are dedicated to making the schools work, opening them up, helping our students, making sure that everything is in the best order possible. And I'd like to share with you how we really need to address the coming Maryland minimum wage increases and our support staff pay schedule. Thank you for your time. I know that you make the best decisions, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other public comments? That concludes public comments for this evening. Council comments. Josh?
Yes, I'll start off by saying I wanted to, keeping on the education front, I wanted to congratulate my twin sister, Stephanie McCoy, and all the other semifinalists for Wycomico Teacher of the Year. My sister represents Y High, and I'm very proud of her. I will also say, this past weekend, I went to the Parkside CTE Career and Technical Education Skills USA Competition in open house. That was an amazing event. Folks, I think a lot of folks in the room might know, but that, you know, that's, it's pretty amazing what you can do in Wycomico schools, and it's amazing what's being done, everything from computer technology to masonry to machinery, machinists, and other parts. It was a great open house, and I'm really proud of our county for what we're doing, and I know we're going to do even more. Last thing I'll say is Rural Maryland Day is today. Well, I actually spent most of today in Annapolis, going around and talking with not just our representatives on the shore, but the urban representatives across the state, and let them know what we do in rural Maryland, and why do we do what we do and why it's important. So I was very happy to be a part of that.
Thank you, Councilman Hastings. Any other council comments?
I wanted to thank, sorry. I wanted to thank everyone on the west side of town. I had the opportunity to attend Sharp Town Meeting last night and got quite a bit of feedback from the citizens there in support of Mardella being back on the CIP and having that happen. It was a very nice turnout to hear from everyone, and also to Ms. Smith's comment on the support, the letter of support to the governor for an internal auditor for the education system. I think that that's something that the council should look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ackley. Any other council comments? Council McCain?
Yeah, a couple of quick comments. I wanted to thank Ms. Smith for her sharing the information, her comments regarding the Kerwin Commission. And I appreciate her comments, particularly regarding, sort of summarizing the five priorities of Kerwin, particularly accountability, because often I hear out there in the public when I'm talking to people, they'll say, oh, well, I support everything in Kerwin, but I'm concerned about the accountability. I'm like, well, you realize that's actually one of the five pillars of the commission? So, you know, it's one of their main priorities. So, you know, I appreciate you sharing that. And I just want to remind people that actually, this weekend is the annual Rock and Roll Revival Show at Bennett High School, and hopefully you'll have the opportunity to attend that. It goes on for three showings this weekend, and if you've never attended that, I encourage you to.
Thank you, Councilman McCain. Any other council comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session, followed by an administrative closed work session pursuant to the general provisions, Article, Section 3-104, to provide direction to the council administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. First item on the open work session agenda is the School Board Nominating Committee. Their recommendations on the process to follow a vacancy on the Board of Education. Ms. Smith, were you going to participate in this tonight?
Can we need to do so?
I'm not quite, I'm not quite familiar with exactly who may have been brought in as far as to help with the suggestions that were made, but you certainly could if you'd like. I'm assuming that you were part of that? Yes. Okay. That'd be good. Thank you. Any discussions on the part of council as far as what the recommendations were in how we can work towards fine-tuning the draft for the nominating commission, as far as what their workload is going to be?
Well, I guess can we walk through this to make sure we're, you know, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what's quote being recommended. I mean, I see some highlights here, but it looks like the first item is changing the language as far as public hearings, to say a minimum of one, or?
Yes. Prior to that, there were a minimum of two, I believe, that were required.
And so that gives opportunity to adjust the number of meetings to the number of candidates.
Okay. Very good. So that was the first recommendation. Would, do you have it in front of you to go through the list?
Oh, no.
No.
Oh, I've got this, but I wanted to.
The second part of it is, it says, one member from the Wycomico County PTAs. I believe that originally we were having many more. Was it one from each PTA?
Uh-uh.
No?
We had one.
I'm trying to remember.
If you can speak into the microphone for us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
One, one member of the commission would represent the county council of PTAs, but since there is no longer an official county council of PTAs.
I see.
The PTAs for each of the schools could presumably get together and nominate one person for that position.
Okay, so that sort of replaces the whole idea of the organization as a whole. It's just, is in more general terms, so that the Wycomico County PTAs can get together and make that decision. It doesn't have to be the organization that now is defunct.
Well, it's for the, for the parents to be able to participate in the process.
Okay. Which I think was the original intent.
Right.
The next portion, the next page, the next section references, "The Wycomico County Executive's Office shall provide staff and funding for the commission." That's self-explanatory. I thought that we had an arrangement that had already been made with the Board of Education, that they were quite willing to supply the staff and the funding for the commission.
And I'm not sure how that worked out, but in the beginning, it seemed as though the board wanted to not seem to be hands-on in the process. board wanted to not seem to be hands-on in the process, but wanted there to be the group who took the lead. And so with that, as I think Mrs. Ackley pointed out the last time we were here, there is mention of that in the bill itself.
Right, yeah, I don't think we needed to change anything in the wording regarding that.
Yeah, I think that the Board of Education was a little bit leery of getting too much involved in it, as was the council, because we were afraid there'd be a conflict of interest. But I think the matter of just supplying staff and funding for the commission, we felt really wasn't going to be any type of a conflict, and it would, it would probably work out just fine. So we'll probably be good with that. The next section for the recommendation was, the Wycomico County Council shall appoint an individual to fill a vacancy on the county board for the remainder of the term of the position that they fill.
It's the job not of the county council, but of the nominating commission. Maybe I didn't understand what you just read.
It says, the Wycomico County Council shall appoint an individual to fill a vacancy on the county board for the remainder of the term of the position that they fill. The highlighted area was for the remainder of the term of the position.
Yeah, because the current, so I think the current regulation says it's until the next election.
Right.
So that, the discussion, so the discussion centered around, you know, should they fill out and serve the whole term?
Right.
We were kind of back and forth on that, too. I knew there was two, sort of two sides to that coin. You know, it seems to make sense, okay, they serve out the term, but then Ms. Ashanti pointed this out from the NAACP, that, but then you could theoretically have someone serve almost four, like in this instance, we just had the appointee could almost serve four years almost, but they weren't technically even elected. So, you know, she has expressed some concern about, about that, which is, was a legitimate point, but it's also a legitimate argument that they would serve out the term. I think we also had discussion about just being consistent with what we do, like with county council members, which, you know, they serve, if they're appointed, they serve until the next election, which could be midterm, so.
I believe that's what we're doing now, right?
Right, and that's what we're doing now, right? Yeah, that's, yeah, just for the public's purpose, you know, what we do now is they serve until the next election, if someone's appointed.
Okay.
Mr. Cannon, I have just a drafting comment on that. If the decision is to change it so that the person that the council appoints serves the entire term, I would suggest using the language that I suggested originally back in September. I think it does the same thing as what is stated at the very bottom of Page 1 of this handout we got tonight, the nominating commission meeting of December 11, 2019.
Right.
Does the same thing, and I won't get into the weeds, but there's language in the original bill that was intended to make it so that the person would have to run if they weren't appointed before the next election. But if you want to change that, then I think that should be taken entirely out, and it should be revised, as I've outlined in my memo. It does the same thing. It's just a different way of doing it, and I think it's a lot cleaner.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Brumley, why don't you announce for the public your name and et cetera for Pac-14, at the mic so that everybody can hear you. Thanks.
Ben Brumley and I represent the PTA of Wycomico County.
Thank you. I am glad to have you here tonight. You didn't know we were going to be moving so fast, did you?
No.
You thought by eight o'clock we'd be getting into it.
And I'm also the chair of this committee.
Understood. Would you like to continue on? Ms. Smith's done a great job. We're at the section now where the committee had noted, other suggestions from the commission. If you would like to continue on with that as far as what you.
Excuse me, Mr. Brumley, can you push your microphone closer to you?
Yeah, we have trouble with these mics. You have to almost get right on top of it.
Maybe you can pull your chair in closer. Thank you.
Okay, how far have you gotten?
Around the second page.
Where it says, other suggestions from the commission?
Okay. A lot of the things that we discussed are what we have already discussed in previous work sessions with you. The one that we talked about in the last time we met with you was about the public hearings, and to change that, as we had talked about, to a minimum of one.
Okay.
So we wouldn't have to have to.
Don't already cover that?
We reviewed that. All right.
The other suggestions, I'm sorry.
And the other two, and, yeah, right, we're down to other suggestions from the commission.
Sorry.
That's okay. This is in reference to trying to get a quorum together, having had trouble getting a quorum together, and what you could do about that.
Basically, what the committee felt that, because there had been discussion to take it down to seven or to leave it at 14, and it seemed like everybody wanted to keep it at 14 to make sure that all the original agencies or townships were represented on the committee. So what we basically came up with is that if we have someone, a member of the committee that does not attend meetings, does not respond, that, that would have to go through the chair, basically, and then the chair would contact the county executive, and the county executive would send a letter to whichever agency or township that that person was representing, and see how the, that area wanted to move forward, whether they wanted to, you know, go out and reach out to that person, or if they wanted to suggest a new name.
Okay.
But we left it that the county, the county executive would do that, because the county executive is the one who basically nominated to the county council the members of this committee. So we thought it would be best just to go back to, through the executive's office.
Okay.
Dave, not Dave, I'm sorry. I was talking to your brother today. Ben, your, your 14 members, that's a tough group to put together. I just look at those numbers, and I understand why you're having problems getting 14 people to show up at a meeting. And I guess the first thing I would say is, these 14 different groups, do they all really want to be involved? Do you think, I know, has there ever been anybody that's reluctant to even send anybody? Or do they always seem to put somebody forward?
Well, I'm not sure if the areas that are sending a representative are aware that their representative isn't attending. So that's why we thought if the county executive sent the letter to that agency or the township, then they would be aware of the fact that their representative is not attending, and it would be up to them whether they wanted to appoint someone else to the county executive and then to, you know, go through the channels, like coming to you for approval.
The, the problem you run into that is sometimes you're up against the wall time-wise, you know, letters back and forth, coming, people coming to us to get approved, and you're trying to get somebody nominated. I see that as being one of the issues, and I understand the fairness of having a larger committee. Everybody wants to be well-represented, I understand that, but it just seems to me like that's a, it's a tough.
What? I'm not, you're done.
You're kidding.
But, I mean, I like Mr. Brumley's, you know, what you all, or the commission's, your suggestions here as far as, because like you said, yeah, I think sometimes there's not clear that the, that the representative is not, but we actually, we discussed it at one of the previous work sessions on this, and the thing was that that 14-member commission is very specifically spelled out in the, in the state law, is what organizations they have to come from. If you start, if you, if we start carving ones out, it's like, if you carve this one out, well, then that's a problem for the others. And, and also I understand, was you only had, wasn't there only one meeting that you didn't have a quorum?
Yeah, there's only been actually one meeting, but the problem is that if it, we'll see, the town, say Town of Fruitland, I'm not saying that represented whether they've come or not, but if they think they're being represented, then, and they're not, then I think we, the commission thought that they should be notified to let them know that nobody's showing up.
Sure, and that's what you've all addressed here, so I like that, you know.
And I think that would eliminate, when you start talking about whether they serve out a partial term, or, you know, or to the next election, I think because of the way the commission is made up, it's pretty much a good representation of the county and of the voters. So I think that kind of works around that issue of, you know, how long that person actually serves, because of how many organizations in every township is represented or supposed to be represented. That's the problem that, you know, yes, we've had trouble, that just one, one meeting, we had another meeting that somebody got there late, but, and we were, you know, questioning whether or not we could have business or not, but it is, it could be an issue. So if it's cleared up, and, and basically, you know, there's an excuse and an unexcused. So if, if the person is unexcused, they've not contacted the chair of the committee, and given the reason why they're not going to attend, then that's when we would move forward with contact, or the commission would work forward with contacting the county executive and start those procedures.
Yeah, and I think it also helps, we're jumping ahead a little bit, but it goes along with, there's your other items there from the commission, like, you know, number three, where the executive's office would actually send the current members, you know, letters outlining what their duties are and what their expectations are, you know, what their attendance requirements are. So I think them getting that will also help, you know, the appointees to realize, you know, the importance of them attending the meetings.
Because right now, on this, on the present commission, there's, there's actually two members that have never been to a meeting and have never responded in any kind of way to any email or anything that we sent out. So we haven't gone forward with any because we wanted to, you know, get your approval on this before we took any action at this point.
Okay. So following that, the next item was, now, the person, you're suggesting that the person misses two or more meetings without communicating with the chair or the vice chair, okay? And then the next section was, the county executive should send out an updated letter to current members regarding job duties, expectations, and attendance requirements, correct?
Yes.
Right, so some of this we're looking at is actually going to be establishing greater policies within your organization.
Right.
Not necessarily bylaws, but some type of manual for policy, for guidelines, for procedures that you want to follow. Some of it may require involving state legislation as far as amending that, which would be next year.
Yeah, well, that's why we put these as suggestions that whether, which area it would fall into, whether it would fall into rewriting a bill to, to the law, or if it was something that the county council could, and the county executive could work out between.
Okay, okay.
The first ones basically were, we thought what should be changed in the bill.
I, I see.
At the present time. The rest are suggestions and how the county council wants to follow up with that.
Great. Number four was just talking about, they should, they should have to run for the elected position during the election, that all board members are being elected.
Yes.
Of course, as number five states, even though you want them to run during a regular election cycle, you suggest it also be staggered, right?
We would think so, yeah. That would be the best for the, the board with having 20-odd years of dealing with the Board of Education, to have a, right now, it's possible to have a completely new board. And the commission feels that to have that staggered, then you wouldn't have a completely new board, you'd never have the opportunity to have a new board. You would at least have some incumbents that could carry on the work and not have to wait for people to get trained and, and educated in what their job is and, and so forth, is that.
That, that was a little problematic, though, because that, that argument would apply to the council as well, you know, based on that, our whole county would, would do staggered elections, but they don't, they don't, you know, we all can be replaced every four years, just like the school board can all be replaced every four years, so it's also very costly to do staggered elections.
Louis Riley attempted to have that done.
Yeah, that's been, that's.
Attempted to have that done with the county council several years ago. What, what happens is, if you try to do that, some council members are going to have to serve longer than four years.
Right, to make.
Or, or board members, to, to get that staggering adjusted and then.
Or less, whichever.
Yeah.
Well, you know, just, like I say, it just, we're not there to work out the logistics for the county council, we're dealing with the Board of Education, but I think it's, the Board of Education is handling and going through a large part of the county's money. And to have somebody that's elected and has no idea of what their job is, or, or what their, what, what the day-to-day activities are of the Board of Education, and spending that money and overseeing what the actual school board does, I, I think is, is very important. And being we're in just the first time that a board has been elected, then if it's going to be done, it needs to be done now.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, welcome to the world of elected school boards, that's why we had, that was the whole rationale behind, we used to have appointed school boards for all those years, that was the reason why, because you tried to get people appointed that already had the knowledge and so forth, but when you, you know, the voters went to the elected school boards, and now you have elected school boards, it's, you know, whoever wins the vote.
Right.
Which may or may not have the knowledge, so.
Well, we'll take that into consideration without a doubt, because I, I do remember it was, I'm not quite sure why we landed on what we did, but it certainly is worth revisiting because I know that was a, a large topic of discussion even then.
And there's been talk in the community, I've had people, you know, ask me about this question, you know, what happens if it's a whole new board that's elected, and, you know, how's it go? And I know usually there's the, if it was someone, you know, going out, that they helped the, the new ones in, in training of their job and their, what their responsibilities are, but that's just something that the commission thought that it's worth looking at.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you very much, because I, I know the reason we.
Yes.
Okay, good enough. Yes, yeah, that was one of the first couple of items we touched on. But, yeah, I remember the, the length of discussion we started having until we decided maybe we should let someone else handle it, that maybe had a better idea of what you needed, and that was you. And I, I know you've taken a lot of time to put this together, and we appreciate it. We'll keep you abreast of what we do and when our work sessions come, and what resolutions we come up with, where we decide to, to have this all come to rest.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Amazing.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, I'm assuming we're, that would be a bill for 2021 legislative session for state?
Yes, yes, yes. We, we could certainly kind of like sit down and go through it to decide how much of it's going to have to be, you know, county policy as far as what we want to establish locally, knowing full well that, as they stated, the first few items that were on the, the list would certainly have to be prepared and ready to go to the state of Maryland for amendments if we choose to do that. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Next item on the agenda is the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2021 through 2025. I know we have Mr. Wayne Strasberg here, and we have Mr. Weston Young here.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Pleased to be here. At the outset of, of this work session, let me just reiterate that we really don't know what in this plan we can afford and what we can't afford until we get further clarification on what fiscal impacts are going to come down from the state. You may recall that I gave council a 10-year forward forecast on what things looked at. You may recall some of the assumptions that, that we made in that forecast, and so, and, and you may also recall that capital spending was going to be, was going to become very, very difficult after 2022. So far, the assumptions, the underlying assumptions that we made when we ran that 10-year forward forecast are pretty much spot-on. ten-year forward forecast are pretty much spot on. Actually, one of the assumptions, healthcare costs, I had put, or we had put, an eight percent increase in healthcare costs, and the county's, healthcare costs, our premium for this coming year is estimated at an increase of thirteen percent. So there are a couple of things that just aren't going in the right direction. So I just wanted to again preface all of this with the fact that we, we're in a, a very fluid situation, and until certain things are clarified, it's going to be difficult to make final spending decisions. The other thing that I would like to, to point out is that with, with regard to the Board of Education's CIP, I'd like to make a couple of comments. In the 2020, our current fiscal year, we've got $7 million programmed for Beaver Run Elementary, and I met with, with Micah, Liesl, and Jesse Reed one day last week, I forget what day it was, and I asked them for a, a cash flow forecast. They're going to need that funding by December one of 2020. So we're in some time compression. What I would tell you is that Michelle Anis and Jesse Reed did get together, they scrubbed the bond issues, the projects that could be closed out, and we can repurpose $6,144,348. Now, we've got to check with bond counsel Lindsay Raider to double-check on the language in the specific bond bills to be sure that we have the flexibility of repurposing those funds. I would think that because they're being repurposed for a school construction project, that we should be okay.
Is that part of the Bennett Middle School?
It's several projects, actually, I can give Laura tomorrow
I think it's primarily Bennett Middle.
Yeah, Bennett Middle.
So wait, or, I'm sorry, did, did you, that's six million, was that just, how is that?
Projects have to be closed out, they have to be formally closed out before we can do anything with the money. I went through this at the last council meeting.
Well, no, you didn't, you didn't clarify if it was the county's budget or if it was the school board's budget.
It's the Board of Education's projects. They have to certify that the projects have been closed before we can do anything with the money. So until they certify that the projects are closed or, or abandoned, the money is in stasis. So we've scrubbed all that.
And there was that 1.3 million, I believe, that was overstated from
Well, that's 2022, John, that's the Beaver Run.
Right.
The, the estimated need for Beaver Run is going to come down, I think, I'm going by memory, in 2022, a million, two seventy-nine, so that's not impacting 20 or 21, the cycle that we're in right now. The other thing I wanted to point out to you was that you will recall that we had a 2019 surplus of $4,146,224 from that council has previously appropriated $2,516,150. That was for Airport Water, Morris Mill Dam, and the Corrections Roof Project. So when you net those numbers, you come to $7,774,422. So I think absent us being able to go to, to market and borrow money, we do have cash on hand ostensibly, if, if, if I can get certification from Lindsay Raider, we would have close to $7.8 million available to keep Beaver Run on task and not hold that project up. The other comment I would make is that I've had further discussions with the county executive, and the Mardella project is open for further discussion, but again, we need some further clarification from, I think his name is Bob Gorrell at the IAC. We're going to try to get together with him. We're in Annapolis tomorrow, I don't know what his availability is. We'd like to have a discussion with him about what the state's actual fiscal situation is with regard to these projects, but we also, again, need to understand what the fiscal impacts are going to be as it, as it, as it relates to the overall affordability of all the projects that we've put forward in the CIP. So we're, we're trying to update this almost on a daily basis, getting as much information as we can from day to day, so that we can provide you with the best information we can as to where we think we're going to land on this.
Wayne, wasn't there some projects that we forward funded that we were supposed to get reimbursed on? Not just from the Board of Ed, but other projects? I remember, I remember we had
Is the airport one of those?
We haven't forward funded anything, and, and I'll, I'll go through the airport in a minute, because I know that that's one of the specific areas that you wanted to talk about this evening. Joe, I'd have to go back and look at that for you. I really don't want to talk off the top of my head.
I just recall something a year or so ago that
Yeah, there was, there was some forward funding, and I, I'm drawing a blank, but I'll, I'll look that up for you. I'll get that back to you tomorrow.
I guess the question would be similar to what Mrs. Smith said, that, oh, I guess a lot of the impact for Kerwin doesn't hit us until 2026, though I would assume that we would start maybe looking to
Well
Have a sinking fund for it.
Well, the issue is, is that hasn't been decided yet. I mean, Annapolis hasn't decided how they're going to fund their portion of Kerwin, and they haven't decided what the proposed loading, whether it's front-loaded, back-loaded, whatever, that, that, that's all going to be discussed. The Kerwin Commission put forward their recommendations, but you've got the General Assembly that's going to make those decisions, and they are nowhere close to making those decisions. Our reading on that is we're not going to have any real clarity on that until probably early April. So it's, you know, it's sort of foggy right now in terms of what that total impact is going to be and how it's going to be funded, and the timing of what those mandates are going to be. So we, we need that in order to really take a look at this five-year plan, if you will, because we don't know what the, what the impacts are going to be.
Wait, what?
Yes, sir.
A question I have, when you were talking about the cash on hand and so forth, but I think twice you sort of made the reference about if we don't go to
Right.
The bond market.
Right.
But why wouldn't we be going to the bond market when we got, you know, a couple, you know, we have two school projects, and we, we also have the state of Maryland, not, nothing to do with Kerwin, but Governor Hogan has made, you know, millions of dollars available for school construction. So anyhow, we got, you know, state dollars available, you know, record, a record amount of state dollars available, a low-interest rate environment, and we always go to the bond market for large capital projects like that, so.
Well, I, I wasn't going to bring this up, but I'll respond to that. The elephant in the room is that in order to pass any bond legislation, we need to certify that we have a duly-appointed county attorney and a duly-appointed finance director. It's problematic. And that, that is unfortunate, but, but the reality of it is, and we're, we're, we're talking with Lindsay Raider, but, you know, when, when we have a, that difference of opinion between the executive and, and the council as to whether or not those sitting appointees, if you will, are duly-appointed, we, we can't go to the market.
It's not a difference of opinion between the county council
You're right, Joe.
It's not a difference of opinion between the county council and the county executive, it's, it's a charter. It's what the charter says. So, you know, it's just not being followed. Is that what you're going to say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what's the time?
I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to be sarcastic.
No, no, I understand that, but, but, but my point is that I can't go to the market.
I know.
When, when would we normally go to?
We would have already been up there.
That's what I thought, like November or December or something, normally?
We would have already, we would have probably sold, we, we tended to sell early in the past several cycles because of the direction of the interest rates in the market bill. We, we would have probably sold October, November.
How, how late can we go?
We can go as late as we want. The later you go, you, you, you take somewhat of an interest rate risk, although I don't think that's a great risk right now. I think that risk will occur after the next presidential election, but you begin to run out of time. You just begin to run out of time, because, you know, we've got to get in front of the credit rating agencies, we've got to go through the entire public process, then you've got to advertise the issue, then you've got to close the issue, have it funded. So I would tell you, quite frankly, that we are probably very, very close to fail-safe.
Would you be very close to fail-safe if you were to change course and do the funding with a local bank or
You still have the same issue, you still have the same issue, I think.
Well, you would, but you would, certainly on the certification.
The certifications, yeah.
And
I thought about that, but we still have that same, that same issue, John.
Right. I just didn't know that if, if somehow or other we could manage to get the right people in place and begin this process, then maybe it would be a, the window wouldn't be quite so tight with local funding as opposed to the, the procedure you have to go through on bond at the market.
Yeah, I mean, the other alternative is, and, and, you know, we, we, as you know, we've got a healthy fund balance right now. The other alternative is, is that we could, to Joe's point, for the projects that are critical, we could forward fund those out of fund balance, basically loan that money, if you will, and have it repaid when we go to the bond market. I'm, I'm not crazy about that idea, but I, on the other hand, don't want to see critical projects held up when we're sitting on the cash that could keep them moving.
Well, you were going to bond 12 million.
Thereabouts.
Around, and then, then you were going to use about 9.6 in Pago.
Yeah, it starts to get sketchy.
Right, so with a nine point
If we use all, if we, if we go to fund balance for all that, you know, that, that, you know, those numbers don't work. But, you know, let me, I think for right now, my, my major focus right now is keeping Beaver Run on track, and I think this is a, a, a good way for us to keep that project on, on track, not leaving what I'll call idle fund balance sitting in place when we have that need. And if Lindsay can give us an opinion that we have the legal authority to repurpose that $6.1 million, then I think we've got a solution right there for Beaver Run, it stays on track. Moving forward into 2021, the document that we're, you know, that we're looking at right now, again, I come back to, I think what I'd like to accomplish in these work sessions is to have good discussions with council about the relative necessity of each one of the projects that have been listed. What I'm also trying to do is, particularly with the airport, because I know there's a lot of money in play at the airport, and I think you made the suggestion, or you made the comment at the last meeting, you know, can we push some of that spending, you know, instead of out of the next five years, can we push that out a little bit further? What I'm sitting down with the airport staff and doing is really taking a very, very hard and realistic look on, at, you know, what, what is the real construction timeline? For instance, there are certain things that we can't do out there until we have airport water, and right now, you know, that, that, we, we still don't have a, have closure on that. I can't do anything with the extension of the runway until the FAA approves our master plan, and they're telling me that we might have that approval by March 31, but I've heard them give me dates before. So I'm going to try to do as good a job as I can of saying, okay, what is a realistic timing for these projects, and try to dovetail the funding of those projects, and that may spread the timeline out further. That's work in progress, I haven't been able to sit down and do that yet, but I intend to start that process. We have a weekly airport meeting, I intend to start that progress, that process this Thursday. So, you know, with that background, if you will, you know, we're, we're here, we have, have Tony Rudy here, Don's on vacation, but Tony is here from the airport, we have Dallas here from Public Works, and it was my understanding that you wanted to talk about education, Public Works, and the airport, so we have the people here to talk to you about that. Happy to answer any questions, provide any clarification that we can.
One more question about
Sure.
The airport, Don, you were at a hang-up with the city
Yeah.
At agreements, anyone?
I wouldn't say a hang-up. We're, Paul Wilbur and Mark Tillman are meeting in the near future to, if you watched the city council meeting last night, they were all in favor of supporting this project. So it's about how do we work out an agreement that both sides are okay with, and they've both been tasked to sit down and hammer something out that, that makes sense.
That's an annexation issue.
It's the pre-annexation agreement, Joe, yeah.
Is it premature to close the Waltham Switch Road until we're really a little further down?
That's going to be a requirement, John, in any event, to get the, to get the airport master plan approved.
Yeah, that's not tied to the water.
You know, that, no, that's not tied to water, that the, the reality of it is, is that the, the FAA has not been happy with the Waltham Switch Road alignment for years. They've basically winked at it, but when you go in every 10 years for your airport master plan update, that's when they say, okay, now you have to address these things. And the problem with Waltham Switch Road is that we have stopped traffic in the RPZ, the landing zone, and, and they just don't allow that. So the alternative was for us to totally realign Airport Road. That doesn't work, that's very expensive. So from our standpoint, the FAA is saying, you know, you've got to close through traffic on that road. From my standpoint, Joe, I think it also lessens the, the possibility of accidents at that intersection of Waltham Switch and Mount Herman Road. But we would keep it open to the point where that lady's home is, and the subdivision on the left-hand side would still have access. So I think for the residents, you know, it's fine. We spoke with the fire, you know, EMS, and they're perfectly comfortable with going up, you know, up Mount Herman and, and so it's, it's unfortunate, but it's a necessity that we do that.
The concern I'm hearing from folks are, is in the Quail Ridge neighborhood
Mm-hmm.
That they're worried it was going to get closed off at Mount Herman Road.
No, 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 we're not
And I just saw the map on here, and I talked to Dallas earlier, I hadn't opened that email yet when I talked to Dallas, but
No, we wouldn't do that. The only issue with the FAA is the incursion of traffic and stop traffic in particular in that RP, the runway protection zone.
Right.
So you've got aircraft going up, coming down, they don't want a stopped vehicle or a transiting vehicle distracting a pilot or perhaps being, being an obstruction if the pilot comes in too low or the aircraft is disabled on takeoff or landing.
Yeah, I guess just one last comment, comment before we leave the, the schools. I mean, I just can't emphasize enough the importance of finding a way, whatever alternative we're going to have to do to keep Beaver Run and Mardella on track. I mean, we're in a situation where, you know, we got dollars available that we've never seen before, so not to utilize that, I mean, these, they're not going to go away, so the longer we delay it, that just means it costs more in the future, the more it's going to cost us in the future, and we have the capacity, so, you know, I just, I just can't emphasize that enough, we got to figure this out
Understood.
Yeah, to keep those on track.
Understood. We, we've had further discussion with Executive Culver, and he's open to further discussion on Mardella Middle Senior High School. So we, we need to, our first step on that, we want to talk to Bob Gorrell at IAC, but we want to also, in the very near future, have a meeting with, with Donna, Micah, Liesl, and, and Jesse to see if there's some way that we can coalesce and have a mutually acceptable and, and Jesse to see if there's some way that we can coalesce and have a mutually acceptable solution for that school. And we know that a solution is needed.
I have a, I have a question. I'll ask you two questions on the education side. So we're, we're on track for the funding for Westside Air Mediate's roof?
Our, we're proposing our portion, the local match. The state, according to the IAC documents we've seen, has deferred that. So we're, we have our portion forward, just like last year, but the state, due to, I think I said fiscal constraints, the same thing they're saying about Mardella right now, due to fiscal constraints, they're deferring the project.
And that's also part of the discussion, Nicole, that we're going to have with Bob Gurrell. We need to get our bearings on where they are.
So if, if this is the county's portion, and the state doesn't approve it, do we get our money back?
Yeah, we, we keep it.
What do you, what do you do with that? You reallocate it, or?
It's, when Wayne was describing the bonds, sort of the project's closed, or it's abandoned, this would be abandoned, and then we put it forward next year, as long as it remains a priority with the Board of Ben.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got.
So it wouldn't go anywhere else unless we transferred it.
No, we've got to find a way to get that project funded. What, the unfortunate thing is, is that the winds, the winds in Annapolis are that they, they want to see the local governments pick up the costs of limited and systemic renovations, that they, that the state wants to be putting their money into new school construction. And I think we all know that the metroplex counties are in very sore need of new school construction as well, and there are a lot more votes in the metroplex counties than there are in rural counties. So there, there are political balls in the air, there are fiscal balls in the air, and some of that is beyond our control. But when you look at these projects and you understand that we cannot have a school that has a leaking roof, so we have to find a way to figure that out. So we're trying to get our bearings again with the IAC. And, you know, if, you know, if need be, we've got to get with, you know, with our legislators and see to what extent we can, can lobby and negotiate for a, a better share, if you will, you know, of those funds. The thing, things that I'm hearing each week when I go up for the education subcommittee and the legislative committee is that the metroplex counties are going to be getting the lion's share of school construction funding. That, that shouldn't come as a big surprise.
Which is kind of what concerns me.
Particularly in the lead-up to the 2022 election.
Right, which is kind of what concerns me, similar to what Bill was saying. I mean, if, if the money gets committed, we could be, you know, we could really be left out. They could be sitting there going, well, we haven't heard from Wycom County. We haven't, we haven't heard from you.
Yeah, we need to get up there.
So, you know, how, what did you expect us to do? And it won't take long for that to possibly go in the wrong direction.
We need to get up there.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't know where to go forward from here, Wayne, really, because it sounds to me like you have to completely regroup the entire plan. You know, we could have work sessions with, with either one of the gentlemen here tonight, but my concern is, is that it's going to spend an awful lot of time and possibly discussing projects that we don't even know if they're going to be a reality in the next, in this, in this CIP.
Look, you know, I wanted, I wanted these gentlemen to be available if you had looked through their project lists and had specific questions about, well, what's that? Why are we doing that? Why is that important? We're happy to have that discussion. On the other hand, if you think that it's a bit early, you know, I'm willing to go home and have dinner.
Yeah. I guess a more broader question was, in, in the CIP, you were planning seven, about $7.8 million for 2021. Two and a half of that was old money, and then the other 5.2 was Pago. Now, do you still see that as a reality? Or are we tied up with the fact that the next 17 million for '22 could cause us to be at risk? Other words, why spend 7 to 8 million now if we can't finish the second phase of the project?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, and I can't tell you that, John, with any certainty until I get better information from the General Assembly. Because the, the thing that you don't want to do is you, particularly, you don't want to borrow money and/or take money from the general fund and begin architectural, engineering, and other soft costs on a project that may not be able to be executed because of the fiscal constraints or, you know, because the state says, no, we're not going to support that. So, you know, we, we, we don't, it, it's, the timing is atrocious. I mean, that's all I can say. The timing is just terrible. And what, again, what we're trying to do on a day-to-day basis, on a weekly basis, is to look at as many options as we may have, so the critical projects stay on track, and also looking at what other funding opportunities are. I got email traffic today that I forwarded to Chris Van Hollen's office and Ben Carden's office about some $906 million in federal funds that are available for transportation projects. I don't know whether or not we could tap into those for, for instance, the runway extension, because that's, that's the most expensive project that we've got at the airport. And of course, that runway extension, the, the primary driver for doing that is retaining Piedmont Airlines headquarters here in Salisbury, which is, you know, I think, you know, extremely important. So we're looking for different funding sources. We're looking to get as much information on fiscal policies coming from, or fiscal mandates from the state. And we're looking very closely at trying to value engineer each one of these projects. We've identified several projects at the airport that we think can be valued, value engineered, and can be delivered perhaps at a lower cost.
Any questions, reference it, as far as the airport is concerned? I like the idea of the, I thought the parking lot was really good. I, I thought that was a very good progressive line of, of thinking.
It's going to one-year payback.
Yeah, right, right.
One-year payback.
That's good.
So it's a great idea.
Now, do we completely abandon the group now that's managing all the costs?
You know, that's, I think that's all in play. That, you know, that group, I think, expressed an interest in participating in the whole project, so I, I'm.
But we pay them to participate in the project.
Yeah, that, that's where you've got to pencil it and say, okay, what's the best way to go? You know, airport solar is still, is still certainly a possibility, where we, we, we think we could do what Ray Hoi did out at Warwick Community College in that paid parking lot and generate enough electricity to run the entire airport.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, we've got to get a partner to do that. We've got to get a solar partner to do that. But, but, you know, those are, those are ways that we're trying to mitigate operating costs and improve the airport experience as well.
Okay. Anyone, anybody else have any questions on it? Yeah, I think it'd be nice to, to, I think what the council was really looking for was a really structured detail of where we were really going to be going and how it was going to be sustainable from year one to year five.
Understand.
I think the verdict's still out on that?
It is.
Right. The details of the specifics as far as the reason for the expansion of the, of the runway, or any of the other million terminologies that are used in airport lingo that I always have trouble understanding.
Yeah, I've got, by the way, I've got, I, I had a box, a, a, an acrylic clear box made that is a, it's like a cash box with a little slot in, in the top of it.
Right.
That is an airport acronym find box.
You'll make a million.
And we're going to put it out on the table at the airport commission meetings.
Right.
And at the weekly airport meetings. And every time somebody uses an aviation acronym, they got to put a dollar in it. I've got to figure out what that's going to benefit.
Well, you really.
But I'll figure something out.
You need a, need a credit card reader, is what you're going to need. You're going to need something that can read the chip.
It's, you know, it's, you know.
But all that aside, even, even with all the acronyms, et cetera, we recognize, I think, of the state of the, of the airport and the fact that the hangars need work, and there's so many more. We got your email today that was referencing that, yes, there is competition, and we do need to make sure that we move forward.
Yeah, you saw that. You saw that, yeah.
And I thought that the letter that was sent with Dawn's letter to the FAA explaining the sense of urgency there, not only for Wycom County, but for Piedmont.
Right.
And we do recognize that.
No, 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 I understand.
Again, it was just, it was just trying to portion out the five years, like Joe said at the last meeting, making sure that we're pacing ourselves properly.
I, I could not agree more. I mean, it's, it's very, very, it's very daunting, and, you know, from our standpoint, when we look at it and we forward forecast, we go to Annapolis each week, and we see the direction that things are taking, and we look at the cost of projects and the, the need for these projects across all of our departments, because our infrastructure is, you know, it is in a bit of trouble. But you've got to be able to afford it. And whether or not we can afford it, if you ask me today, I can't tell you, because I don't know what's going to happen to us.
Well, again, though, I think, you know, again, the Warren, I mean, not the Warren, the.
Kerwin.
Kerwin. I don't think we're going to see that impact for several years right now, and we're just looking for the next five years.
Yeah, but you still have to look, you've got to, you've got to look at the 10-year, you've got to look at the 10-year impact, John, because you're going to go out and bond for 15 years minimum. So again, it goes back to, and I'll try to update that 10-year forward forecast based on the learning that we have since I presented it to you, but it puts an awful lot of pressure on capital spending, a lot of pressure on it, unless we find something to cut someplace else. And, you know, with 83%, I think, of our budget, public safety, health and education, not a whole lot left to cut.
I, I think our income tax receipts are going to be up. What's the, what's the?
Well, Andy Shoffel, who's the, in the Controller's Office and does all the revenue estimates, presented to me on Friday, and I went up for that presentation. I've got a copy of it. I can give it to Laura tomorrow. What Andy said was that, you, you recall that we had a, a very, very healthy increase in our income tax receipts in '19. That's principally, a lot of what generated that surplus. He's calling that an anomaly, and that had to do with taxpayer behavior with regard to two things, timing of capital transactions, and also people not being up the learning curve yet on the federal standard deduction and its impact on your state tax returns. State refunds are the lowest that Andy's ever seen. Well, that's because, you know, people, people like me, you know, the federal standard deduction, you know, was very attractive to me, and I knew by taking it, I was going to pay more, you know, in state income taxes. So they're seeing heretofore, with state income tax returns, it was split about 50/50 between tax, Maryland taxpayers who were taking the standard deduction versus the, the itemized deduction. Itemized deduction returns have gone down to 25%. And Andy's anticipating a change in taxpayer behavior. So he's saying that big November distribution that you got, don't count on that distribution again in, in '21. So what we're trying to do is to go back and, and, and correlate the tax receipts that we had in 2018, which were more of a normalized tax receipt, factor that up for what Andy believes our, our net GDP and our net personal income tax increases are going to be, taking out that anomaly, that November anomaly, and see kind of what that looks like. So I, I, I don't, I don't anticipate that trending continuing. I think it's, Andy said basically, he believes it's going to level out, and that we're looking at a third quarter, third quarter '21 into second, third quarter '22 economic slowdown. He didn't call it a recession. He said, but, you know, they're, they're already seeing the, the earmarks for, for an economic slowdown. He believes it'll be a typical, you know, recession as opposed to the recession that we endured for the better part of 10 years. But this one's more of a structural recession, and in some respects, that kind of recession, because it's structural, is perhaps harder to climb out of, because it's not, it wasn't generated by a speculative bubble, it's just a slowdown in the overall economy. We have to grow yourself back out of that.
Right. I'm not sure how extreme those numbers are going to be. I think we'll be fine. All that aside, you know, we do have a CIP. The council's going to have to approve the CIP. There's really not a procedure in place for an amended CIP. I know that last year, we must have had three or four amendments at one time, but there's never been a process to amend a CIP once it's given to the council, outside of maybe what the council might want a request be changed.
Right.
If that were the case, then your deadline, your initial deadline wouldn't have been back in, I guess, December, is that right? It would, it could have been March.
Right.
So I don't know where this is headed, because we already have the CIP, and there's not any process in place to say.
You do.
Take that one back, and here's the new CIP. So, and are we talking two weeks? What is the timeframe? Because we, there has to be a resolution.
Having an amended CIP that I think has legs and can be funded, I think it's going to be April.
Well, that doesn't make any sense, because we'd have to approve it by April. That's, is that when we?
No, you did a resolution to extend that to June 1.
To June 1, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
So, yeah.
Well, still, then you have to get, then you have to borrow, you have to do the borrowing.
That, that is, that is an issue right now.
There's a solution.
And I, I don't have the answer.
There is a solution. There's a solution where we could probably get right back on track in about a week. But any other questions from anyone?
I'll just, I'll just, I don't have anything of major substance to say, but I want to echo Councilman McCain's points. You know, Mardella's got to stay on track. I know we've got, the winds of Annapolis are always blowing towards the big six counties, and they're always going to want to look out for themselves. But, you know, the Speaker Protown used to sit in this body for quite some time, and she's got some sway now. As much as, I mean, not, not anything we don't already know, but as much as we can lean on that, she's a great resource. Yeah, so, thank you for your hard work.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Want to go to the next item? Are we still up here?
Yeah, I think so.
The next item on the agenda is the unfilled deputy director positions.
Yeah, there's one deputy director position that is required by the county code. That's the finance deputy director, and that has not been filled yet. Interest.
Has it been advertised?
No, not yet.
How long has it been vacant?
We believe we can fill, well, it's been vacant since John Ellis.
Retired.
Retired.
And that was, how, how long has that been?
I forget the date, Joe.
Been a while.
We, we, yeah, we think, we think that we have, that we may be able to fill that internally. A, B, you know, let me be candid. If you're going to advertise for that level position, you're not going to find a whole lot of people who want to get into the situation that we have. So.
I understand.
But we still need to, we still, we can't just say, we can't stop. I mean, we do need to fill that position, period, no matter what.
I understand that. The, the, the interesting thing is, is that the county code is silent on the timing of that. But I do understand that it's required by the county code. Fully aware of that.
Well, you know, if, if anything were, were to occur within the next month, where the, the, as it is right now, technically, the finance department has no administration whatsoever, and that's, that's not a very safe place for us to be. I think the, the auditor's report reflected that to a certain degree, maybe a little more subtle, or less subtle, but I think that's where we are. And. And what surprises me more than anything is that we haven't even advertised. Cause you, you, you're certainly not gonna have someone walk in the door if they don't know the position's vacant. And, um, to me, that's leaving this county extremely exposed. That and the position of the, uh, attorney, county attorney as well. We're extremely exposed.
However, we continue to keep the county operating on a day-to-day basis.
Doesn't, well, you say that, but it doesn't sound like it because we don't have a CIP. And we aren't advertising for employees.
No, I think not having a CIP is more functional state than it is the county.
And, of course, the council's not really aware of how well the, the county as a whole is functioning because we're, we're hands-off when it comes to the actual, um, personnel issues. So, we really don't know.
Yeah, uh, you know, yeah, from that standpoint, I, I think, you know, Weston can weigh in. I think, I think the day-to-day operations of the county, I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with them. We meet, you know, with our department heads on a regular basis. I think most of, frankly, all of our departments, uh, are doing, you know, a, a very good job of day-to-day operations. Uh, what, what, uh, is problematic, uh, is our major projects and longer-term planning because, uh, we are, quite frankly, in limbo right now because of the situation. A, the Annapolis situation and the, um, impending fiscal ramifications and the disagreement between the executive and the legislative branch.
Well, you say the disagreement, but if, if the circumstances were not, that the council, I think, were legitimate in its concerns, you could go to the bond market. You could, you could do this funding that you're reluctant to do. If you truly felt that you had a certified finance director, if you really felt truly that you had a certified county attorney, you could move forward with whatever you'd like to. But I think that, that it might just, the reality that might be that sooner or later, you do have to recognize, and I think you probably do recognize, that that would be, uh, somewhat of a, um, of a reckless measure to take under the circumstances and the laws that are in place in Wycomico County.
No, I'm just being realistic. I'm just, I'm, I'm simply saying that. I know that, given the current circumstances, this council is not gonna pass a legislative bill, uh, that authorizes borrowing of money because of the council's opinion that the county attorney and the county finance director are not duly appointed. That's just reality.
It's not the council's opinion. It's the, uh, it's the county attorney's opinion and it's the county council's attorney's opinion. And we've had no opinion whatsoever to, uh, to, uh, counter that, to, to, to justify the executive's position. No legal, not one, uh, legal document to state that the executive's position is valid. So, I think we have to look at where it is. The county execu, the county, uh, attorney says it's not valid. County council attorney says it's not valid. It's not valid. And I think you would risk not the inaction on the part of the county council, if you were to do anything, but you would, you would risk the fact that it could be potential fraud if you were to sign these documents and state that the finance director was the finance director or the county attorney was such.
Well, we're talking with Lindsay Rader about that as we speak, John.
Okay.
To determine, um, you know, we're certainly not gonna lend ourselves to fraud. Uh, I'm certainly not gonna go through the time and expense and effort associated with getting a credit rating, going to the market, uh, only to find that we can't approve a borrowing bill. Just not gonna do it. It doesn't make any sense.
So, talking to Mr. Rader, is that a?
Lindsay. It's a, it's a lady.
Lady, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, talking to Lindsay Rader, are you trying to get them to make some kinda concession where you don't have to have that done?
I'm trying to get an opinion. I'm trying to get an opinion as to whether or not we can, can legally and validly um, pass legislation to borrow money. And I don't have that opinion from her yet. I've had discussions with her.
How can they, how can they give you an opinion on that? When our char, when our charter says that we can't do that. Isn't that correct?
The charter doesn't say that we can't borrow money. It's the bond, it's the bond legislation itself.
We can't borrow money unless we haven't approved.
Right, but that's in the bond legislation, Joe. So, so that's not in the charter. So, if you were to say to me that, yeah, I want you to go out and borrow, you know, twelve million dollars, uh, fine. But, you know.
Cause you still can't do it without an approved finance director.
I don't know that because I don't have an opinion yet from bond counsel.
Right, but we've had, this has been six to eight months.
I'm just telling you where we are. I don't have an opinion from bond counsel. I've had discussions with her, uh, and I'm seeing whether or not there's a way that we can really address this legally. Well, can't do it any other way.
Mr. Cannon, I, I wonder if council or representative council should be part of those discussions so that council is current as to what's unfolding. Just a suggestion.
Well, we, we would, um, we'll take that into consideration, Mr. Taylor. Um, I think the only other thing to do, I mean, I think we've pretty much said everything there is to say. Um, again, I, I think it would be very important that the, um, administration look at getting these deputy director positions filled. At least get advertising out for these positions to be filled. Um, I would've, I would've thought they'd been, some type of an ad would've gone out within the same week. And I think, I think, uh, Mr. Ellis left two to three months ago. And it's important to, to get ads out to at least, uh, see who's there. Um, cause again, I think it's leaving the county, it's, uh, very exposed not to have those positions filled.
Is there anyone in the finance office that's, um, has a level of expertise to run the finance office? If there was no, say, somebody didn't show up tomorrow?
Um, I would say that we probably have, uh, other CPAs in the county who we would, in the interim, rely on for that. I, I can't tell you with any level of certainty that we have that. Uh, I think we potentially have that over time, but I'm not gonna say that we have it today at this moment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a letter of support for student transportation legislation. Mr. Desmond Hughes, uh, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening. How's everyone? Pretty good. Good. If you could just state the, your name and position for the, uh, public.
Mike Stalfer, Chief Finance and Operations Officer, Wycomico County Public Schools.
Desmond Hughes, Director of Transportation Services, Wycomico County.
All right, gentlemen, can you give us an overview of what your, I mean, we, we do have a copy of your letter to Delegate Anderson. Just give us an overview of what the circumstances are and, uh, what you, what you need from the, you'd like to, to have from the council.
Certainly be glad to. Um, we've been, uh, for the last five years, as a school system superintendent, has been, uh, requesting a wa, a waiver from the State Department of Education per our COMR regulations in order for us to transport students, uh, from our remote locations inside and outside the county. Um, primarily for our homeless population as well as very limited special needs students. Um, that waiver does not permit, um, to and from school transportation. Um, so we've had to be creative in trying to get students, um, to and from schools best we can. Uh, we tried, we met with, uh, uh, the PZAM, I think is the local superintendent's or Eastern Shores Superintendent's Association. Uh, there was a, they attempted to go the regulatory route, uh, through State Department of Education to get some language changed in, in the regulation. Uh, that never happened, came to fruition. So, we chose, or I chose this year to go the legislative route, met with Delegate Anderson, kinda basically share with him that, uh, unfortunately, our state law has not kept up with the federal mandates that has been imposed on the educational community, uh, particularly our McKinney-Vento Act as well as our foster care and things like that, where, uh, it compels the school system to keep a student in their school of origin when they're displaced. Currently, we have, uh, three hundred and seventy-eight, uh, homeless requests, uh, for this school year. Uh, forty-nine, forty-three of those are students who actually are temporarily residing in this county and we're having to get them outside of the county. Uh, Somerset County, Seaford School District, Indian River, Georgetown, various other, uh, districts outside the county. As well as we're transporting thirty-nine of our students from outside of the coun, outside of Wycomico County, back into Wycomico County. It's not always feasible, nor is it practical all the time, to be able to use the big school bus to get these students wherever they've got to go. And so, this legislation, uh, this proposed legislation that Doc, that Delegate Anderson, uh, has in the works would allow us some flexibility in being able to provide a transportation to our most vulnerable population.
What kinda flexibility? It says here, a school bus or a taxi cab. Well, a taxi cab's a car most of the time, or a minivan, right? And a school bus, of course, is a school bus. So, what are you looking for in the middle there?
Um, as you said, the COMR, current COMR says it's gotta be a taxi cab or a school bus.
Right.
Um, so that means we cannot transport stu, when we say taxi cab, they, the taxi cab company has to be go, has to be licensed through the Public Service Commission.
Right.
Um, we do not have many, uh, taxi cab companies, uh, here in the, here in our county. Um, and then the law also requires that we train those taxi cab drivers as well as monitor to make sure that, uh, that if it's, that we have a contract with the cab company and that, uh, Joe Holloway is the designated driver, that it's, it's Joe Holloway who's showing up every day to transport our kids. We do not have the staff to be able to monitor, uh, to make sure that, um, the, the respective person is transporting our kids. Uh, so right now, the le, reg, regulation allows a school bus or a taxi cab, which to me is just too far extremes. No, no gray area or middle area. Um, whereas, uh, we can do what we've been doing, uh, with the waiver, except just heighten that a little bit um, by, um, using, uh, we've been purchasing, we currently have nine vans that we've purchased over the last, uh, five years, uh, and we hire those individuals, we train those individuals and we monitor those individuals. They're our employees that we send out to these various locations, moving our kids all around and outside the county.
So, the waiver's running out?
Well, the waiver's not running out, but it does not allow us to go to and from school. It allows us to pick a child up and currently, we bring them back into a, to their attendance area, meet, meet a bus at a bus stop versus picking that child up or picking that family up from home or the shelter or the hotel or wherever we're picking them up from and taking them directly to school.
What are you picking them, picking up the whole family?
Yes, we have, we currently have a family of nine, um, that's in Laurel, Delaware, that we're bringing two in front. No, just the children.
Oh, children, okay.
So, so do you have, you have other students that ride connecting buses like that? That's not just homeless population or special needs. There's other, many other programs that children have to ride.
Yes, we have existing shuttles.
Yeah.
Uh, like the Magnet program, ULL program. We have various shuttles that we bring kids to a school. They get on another bus to go to another school. We're not currently doing that with our, with this population of students because the law does not allow us to. We can't bring a child from home to school because the law prohibits that. So, we have to bring kids from wherever we're picking them up from, bring them to a bus stop within that attendance boundary in which would they ca, which they would catch a bus to school. And it's really, what we've been doing is really skating around the law to try to be in compliance with the law. This legislation would, would certainly clean up things for us.
I'm not sure how that's different. I mean, if someone's taking, if a child's taking a bus to one school, getting a connector bus, how's it different from taking him to a bus stop and then getting a bus from there?
What we currently do with our shuttle programs is a child is picked up from home, taken, let's say, to Bennett High School, a Magnet student. And then they get on another bus, transported from Bennett to North Salisbury. With our pop, with our, with our fit population, we're not, the law does not allow us to pick a child up from their, where they lay their head at night and take them to a school because we cannot provide home to school or school to home transportation. So, we would pick that family up or those children up from wherever they lay their head and we would bring them back to,
Central location.
A bus stop, a bus stop, let's say, uh, Booth Street and Lake Street. So, they could catch a bus to, to a school, correct. To be in compliance with the law, with, with the law as it's written currently. We don't do that with students. Our regular in-county students, we don't do that.
They go from their home to another school?
Correct.
And then to another school?
Correct.
Why won't they let you take a van to a school?
It's an antiquated law. I mean, the law is how it's written. Um, it's a, I've been in transportation for twenty-two years and that's been the law. Um, so it's a very antiquated law, um, as I said, it's just not kept up with the, uh, federal mandates that have been imposed upon us.
So, would it give that opportunity for all students then? Like with, what you're saying with the Magnet program, they wouldn't have to take that, that connecting bus? They would just go straight from their home to the school?
As the laws, as the legislation is being proposed, it, it speaks to a specific group of students. Uh, homeless being one, uh, foster care, special needs, nonplacement students, various other things. So, it does, it's, it's not, and it's certainly not my intention to, uh, not use the yellow school bus. Yellow school bus certainly is the safest mode of transportation for our kids, so I'm not trying to get away from that. I'm just trying to supplement that transportation, again, to meet our most vulnerable.
So, I'm just thinking about the child with special needs who goes to Magnet.
They ride a bus.
So, there's already an existing route. So, that existing route would go from wherever their, their home is to that home school, that school that serves that attendance area. And from there, they would take the shuttle to North Salisbury. We're talking about students here with this existing law, um, that are residing in Seaford or, uh, Seastead, Indian River or other places. And we're are, uh, responsible for their education under the McKinney-Vento Act because that, they are homeless and we have to educate them here in Wycomico County.
Or you were saying?
Why wouldn't Delaware with this law have to bring those kids to the state line?
They do. Many times, they do. We, we meet various, uh, school districts at the county or state line. But that's their only obligation is to get them to the state line or the county line.
If you're saying you're going to Indian River, Indian River's not on the state line.
No, the child is enrolled in Indian River, maybe staying at the Christian Shelter. If the child lies their head in our county, we have a shared obligation of getting that child back to their school of origin, which is Indian River. So, their, their school of origin is Indian River. That's where they attend. But because they rest their head in Wycomico County, we have a shared responsibility by McKinney-Vento of getting that child to and from, um, Indian River School District. And again, it's a shared responsibility. So, Indian River also has a dog in the fight and that's why they meet us, let's say, at Delmar Elementary, at Delmar, at the Wawa Food Line, various other places.
So, you're not sending a bus or a car all the way to Indian River?
No, no.
Sorry, go ahead.
Um, so, what's restricting you is COMR?
Correct.
And part of COMR is safety. So, with these vans, what'll be done with safety? With school buses, they're inspected three times a year by the state inspectors. What about these vans?
Well, and it's not, I don't think COMR is safety because it also allows us to use cabs. So, cabs aren't school buses.
Okay, but these vans, what I'm saying is, these buses are inspected three times a year. What about these vans?
Well, and our, our, our current vans are inspected once a year, uh, which is more than what is really required. Again, in our, in our regulation that we currently have with, uh, in our waiver, I should say, um, with the State Department of Education, we outline, you know, what training a driver will, will have, what equipment, what safety equipment will be included in our vans, much like what's in the school bus. Uh, but, you know, first aid kit, fire extinguisher, body fluid field kit, uh, as well as an, an annual inspection. Also, you know, we don't allow kids to ride on the front seat. Uh, all students will be buckled. Those various laws that were, would be required for a, a passenger, uh, any passenger vehicle.
Okay, but this, was it Vento law?
McKinney-Vento.
McKinney-Vento. You guys being paid for these, for this?
No, there's no funding.
No funding? Not tracking the miles of these kids?
Oh, we're tracking the miles, but there's no, there's just no funding.
You're get, not getting paid for the miles these kids are riding on these buses or in the vans? So, how are you funding these vans?
It's out of our general fund. Again, it's a, it's a federal mandate, unfunded mandate that we have to, that we have to comply with.
So, does, is the state part of this mandate?
No, it's a federal mandate.
So, the state doesn't?
Oh, the question I have is, um, what if you were to tell Delaware that you can't drive to Laurel to get it? To get the, to get the family or the ch- Laurel to get it, to get the, to get the family or the child? Is Delaware then by state law obligated to bring that child to, to, you know, to Maryland? Or if, if Dorchester, would Dorchester be obligated to bring that child to Wycomico County? And then we set up some type of a bus station at the Delaware line or at the county line, and then they could be part of the, the regular busing program?
Well, McKinney-Vento says it's a, it's a shared responsibility, and it only speaks to that if there's the financial, which, the financial part of it, aspect of it, in that if a, if two LEAs, two local, two school districts cannot agree, then the, the cost of the transportation is to be split fifty-fifty. That's simply all it says. Typically, what we've assumed, what we, what we've done, if it's our kid, meaning enrolled in one of our schools, we try to make it happen because our school district is the one taking the hit on attendance.
We're responsible.
And we're responsible. So if that child is not sitting in the seat, every day that child's not sitting in the seat, we're the ones who are taking the hit on attendance.
I got, you know, a statement here, a question, I guess. You know, we talk, this isn't about transportation as much as it is about enrollment. You know, we've got kids coming from other states that are enrolled in our school, right? In our schools, that's why we're bringing them in. So how many kids that are staying in this county are being transported to Sussex County by law, having to be?
I think it was thirty, forty-three is to what we're transporting from within this county outside. And, and, and a contributing factor to that, because, you know, it was kind of mind-boggling one year that we were transporting so many kids outside, to outside school districts. And the reason, a contributing factor to that is because we have so many shelters within our county. We have Halo, we have the Christian Shelter, we have the Life Crisis Center. So we have many more shelters within our county that the neighboring counties do not have. So many times, you know, when the hotels are full in the wintertime or whatever, they send families to the shelters here in our county. And when they, again, when they rest their head in our county, then it becomes our shared responsibility to get those students back to their school of origin.
Josh?
Mr. Hughes, did I hear you say nearly four hundred homeless, three hundred and seventy?
Three hundred and seventy. And some of those are duplicate, are duplicate requests. If, certainly if a family or if a student has moved six different times, we count each time that child moves to a different location as an incident because we have to arrange transportation from a different location. I think the number that Dr. Hanlon mentioned in her State of Schools address was right about five hundred plus students, homeless students, that we have in our, in our school system currently.
It sounded to me like, I mean, you, you call it a shared policy, I guess, shared policy?
Shared responsibility.
Shared responsibility, but it sounds to me like Wycomico County is accepting the responsibility to take all, I'll, I'll say the, the students that are here with Halo and transport them into Delaware wherever else they have to go. And it appears to me that you're also saying it's our responsibility to take the students to Laurel and bring them into Wycomico County. So I'm not quite sure, I'm not really getting a good feel here for where the responsibility is shared. It sounds like we're sort of carrying the load on both ends.
Well, we are, again, because we have so many shelters. We don't take them to Seaford. We take them typically to Delmar. We take them to the state line. And then Seaford sends a vehicle to Delmar and they transport them the rest of the way.
Well, then could Laurel bring them to Delmar and then we could just go to Delmar? I'm not trying to rearrange your policy, I don't want to-
Right.
-micromanage you, but it's confusing.
I think what he wanted to know is, do we transport any kids outside the county? Or do we go outside the county to bring any kids in?
Yes.
I don't know why we couldn't just go to Delmar and bring them in. If, if, you know, if they're asking, if, it, it seems like there's already a location in Delmar.
Well, again, if we, let's say for the nine kids that we have in Laurel, for example.
Right, right.
The nine kids that we have in Laurel, Delaware, we go all the way to Laurel, Delaware to bring those kids back to our county.
Right.
We then bill Laurel for their portion from the state line to Laurel, back to the state line. Because-
You left out the most important part.
I wanted to make sure that you understood that.
But he stated earlier, it's a cost, if you can't arrange it, then-
It's a share either physically through us doing, meeting them halfway, or they're reimbursing us.
I'm sorry, but yeah.
No, 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 Bill said, you said it, I missed it.
I think the big misunderstanding here is for years, somebody stood at that podium and not you, okay, and said, we have to bring kids from Indian River or Laurel or Seaford or Cambridge into this county. We have to provide transportation. And that's been what we've been hearing. I think some of the council members will agree with me on that. We've never been explained that there's a shared cost or that-
Shared transport.
Shared transport, or some of us, they're bringing them to Delmar and we pick them up. I think I was, and I don't know about the rest of the council people, I was always under the assumption, hey, we're sending a van to Seaford, or we're sending a van to Indian River.
In some cases we are, but we're getting reimbursed from those districts.
That's something I, I've never heard before, and, you know, when the, we've been explained why their school system costs so much over the years, that's one of the reasons that we've been told, so we've never heard the full story. So tonight we're hearing more of the story, I hope we're hearing the full story.
And we thank-
I don't have a problem with a lot.
We thank you for sharing the, the explanation with the council. I mean, you know, it's, it's new territory for us, and again, we asked you to explain a lot about the policy, and you're very gracious to do that. What we need, though, is you're trying to get a, a approval or at least a consensus from the council for this letter to adjust the transportation issue, is that correct?
I think, back to Mr. Holloway's point briefly, I think part of what you're hearing is the fact that Wycomico, probably compared to anywhere else on the shore, has the bulk of the responsibility because of the numbers of, of families in transition that we have in Wycomico County. So you're imagining that whether a student is a homeless student that is on the eastern side of the county or the western side of the county or in one of our shelters right here in Salisbury, depending on wherever their school of origin is, which might be on, you know, Cambridge or Seaford or Indian River, all of those transports are, are going at one point or another where bus routes normally aren't existing. So we're having to get them to all these different places, and I think that's, that's the concern here, and that's what the legislation's about. Just like the last fifteen minutes and how complex the conversation was, hopefully this, this legislation will help in some of that so that we don't at least have to go and get a waiver from the, the state superintendent each and every year to, to try to make these things happen.
Good.
I appreciate your explanation, yeah, that's helpful. I mean, I'll, I'll be with it. I'm good with the letter.
How are you doing? Very good. We have four that say okay, so we'll, we'll, do we get the letter out, or, I guess we do, or what are you asking for us to do? Are you asking for us to write a letter similar to what you have, or what?
It actually, the request actually came from Delegate Carl Anderson, so he's looking for us to send the letter of support to him directly.
Okay, all right, great, okay. All right. Looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your patience.
That's interesting, because I'm always, for, kind of, just away on that, you know.
Kind of sad, too, you know. People always say the stock market's at twenty-nine thousand, we're, you know, we're killing it, we're doing great, but you've got five hundred students in Wycomico County there.
And a lot of the homeless are actually living with grandparents. Sometimes that's misleading.
Yeah, it's very misleading.
It's disinflated.
The challenge is the challenge, that's for sure.
It's very, I mean, your daughter could-
Entertaining motion to adjourn, go in closed session.
So move second. We do have one other letter of support that is not on the agenda, but is on the council's table. This request came in today also from Delegate Carl Anderson. This is to extend the minimum disparity grant of sixty-seven point five percent of the uncapped grant amount for counties to have an income tax rate of three point two percent for fiscal years 2022 and 2023. The sixty-seven point five percent is going to expire in 2021, so they're looking to extend that to fiscal year 2023.
Okay, great. Everybody okay with this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, looks like we're good. Thank you very much.
Would there be a corresponding Senate bill on that?
Right now, it's only been filed with the House.
Okay, well, but I mean-
It's a good point, Bob.
If it comes up, shouldn't they just tonight decide to send it, so you don't have to come back?
I think we would decide Senate and House both, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
And the same thing with the other bill on the transportation.
That's a good point, yeah, because we do have to have two letters for both, for either committees or whoever. Thank you, Bob. Entertaining motion to adjourn so we can go in a closed session? Second? I was in favor. Please adjourn.